Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the August 11th Planning Commission meeting. Call it to order and ask Commissioner Dingra to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, Commissioner. With that, let's go to roll call.
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present at tonight's meeting.
Great, thank you. Moving on to item number one, approval of the minutes.
I'll move approval.
All right. Anybody else?
I'll second.
All right, first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Sorry, I'm gonna abstain.
I'm here, I'm abstaining.
Okay, two abstentions and three, so that passes. All right, thank you. This leads us to consent calendar. We don't have any consent calendar items. Brings us to item number two, which I believe was pulled from the agenda. Yep, so no action here. Okay. All right, moving on. Item number three, which is a coastal development permit, which seeks approval to install subsurface drainage improvements, drought-tolerant landscaping, and the repair and upgrade of a pool and spa, pool deck, all within 50 feet of a coastal bluff edge. Additionally, the project includes construction of new trash enclosures, trellis, fences, and gates, the site development permit, SDP 25-0022, requests permission to build fences taller than the three-and-a-half-foot limit within the front yard setback at 24242 Santa Clara Avenue. Do we have a staff report?
Interim Planning Manager Kurt Nelson has your staff report.
Good evening, Chair Nelson, members of the Planning Commission. The project before you is kind of a comprehensive upgrade to a lot of the common improvement areas on the Los Marianas condominium development located at 242-24242 Santa Clara Avenue. Hold on here one sec. There we go. Got a couple of aerial images here. As you can see, the site is located on a coastal bluff above the Dana Point Harbor. The site was built in 1972 as a 34-unit apartment complex, and in 1973, a track map was recorded for condominium purposes. So all these units now are four-cell units and have individual property owners. Just get a couple of pictures here of the site. It's a really wide site, so apologize, couldn't get kind of a full frontal shot, but here's a couple of shots showing the existing site from Santa Clara Avenue, some of the existing walls and fences that are in the front, and the improvements, and the two existing driveways. There are some close-ups here on each side where some proposed improvements that you'll be considering tonight, specifically some trash enclosures, some vehicular gates, and a trellis on each side of the east and left driveway. And these are just existing conditions showing what is at the site now. Here's some properties that are located across the street. The site is surrounded across Santa Clara primarily by multifamily development. And then to the east on the bluff is mostly single-family development on coastal bluff lots as well. And then to the west is the Blue Lantern right-of-way and a cul-de-sac there next to the Ken Sampson overlook overlooking Dana Point Harbor. The subject site is located within the boundaries of the Dana Point specific plan, local coastal program, which is still the active local coastal program for this portion of the city. It is located within the Coastal Commission Appeal jurisdiction, and because of the scope of the work with improvements within 50 feet of the coastal bluff edge and the new structures on the front, a coastal development permit is required for this project. The main impetus of this project is the site drainage. We met and have been going with the HOA for quite a while to understand kind of what was happening on the site, and the bigger impetus was because they're having some site drainage issues. The site has an underground subterranean parking area towards the front of the lot, and a lot of the drainage is seeping in there. We've walked the site, and there's a lot of water coming in and creating a lot of damage. So that is the impetus of the drainage improvements. But because these common areas facing the bluff are within the coastal bluff edge, there's some limitations on what and how they can do it. There are existing drainage improvements, but this would be a wholesale upgrade to all of those drainage facilities on the site. This is an overall site plan, and just generally about the top one-half or maybe one-third, a lot of that drainage is collected and diverted to a sump pit that is in the subterranean garage, and then that outlets out to Santa Clara. Those are existing conditions. As part of the improvements, they're gonna do some swales on each of the side property lines, on the east side property line, on the right on your screen there, that will be diverted up to Santa Clara. And everything south of the large building is gonna be diverted towards the back. I'm gonna show a slide here with focuses here on the bluff edge. So everything here will be diverted towards either the sump pit that's located kind of in the middle of the property, or towards an outlet over on the left-hand side that then is curb-cored out to Blue Lantern, excuse me. In just a second here, you'll kind of see the direction of some of the drainage, how it's being diverted, and then how it's gonna find its way out to Blue Lantern. Most of these are, like I said, there's an existing sump pump out there in the same location, so they're just gonna be upgrading those facilities. And then when they come in for plant check, they'll go through all the hydrology report and queues that would make sure that everything on-site is able to accommodate the proposed water, either through this pit or through the sump pit in the basement and the other surface drainage on the side. Additionally, within the, within 50 feet of the coastal bluff edge, they're gonna be removing all the landscaping and upgrading that with Californian native plant pallet only. They'll be removing the existing irrigation lines seaward of the coastal bluff edge setback to bring that more into compliance with the requirements of the Coastal Act and for development adjacent to coastal bluffs. And they'll be incorporating some at-grade decomposed granite walkways that also must be drained to the drainage, and this is pretty common with bluff development that we see throughout the city. They will also be conducting some upgrades to the pool area, replacing the deck areas with pavers around the existing pool, refurbishing the pool with new coping tile and replastering. The shape of the pool will not change, but they are taking out the deep end to make it an overall shallower pool and the spa. And then they will be installing new tubular still pool safety fences and gate, and gates around that. They do have that now, but they're gonna put it more close to the shape of the decking, so it's not in some of the common areas, and so it'll allow the residents to move freely on those paths that you see there. Within the front yard, they're approving several improvements, including the trash enclosures, vehicular gates on each of the driveways, pilasters, and pedestrian gates, and adding some decorative aluminum panels to existing fencing that's at or close projecting or beyond the front property line. And this here just shows the front elevation of those proposed improvements and the, the site plan that is matching this. Some of the existing gates and fences are located less than the required 20-foot setback, and per the specific plan for the coastal residential high-density zoning district, the limits for those walls are three-and-a-half feet. The Orange County zoning code is auxiliary to the Dana Point specific plan for issues that aren't covered in the specific plan, and it allows exceptions for walls and fence heights, and they're similar to our regular zoning code, and so they are requesting to maintain some of those heights and add to them in a couple of areas. Those would be in this area in red right here. Because of the distance from the front of the property line, close to at least 19 feet and close to 20, staff is supportive of these increases. For the new pedestrian gates, we have conditioned the project so that there's at least a 20-foot queue for any cars that would be there, so they wouldn't project into the right-of-way. And staff is generally supportive of all the improvements as they're keeping a cohesive and comprehensive architectural design for the site, including these new trellises. And here's a couple of samples of the finished materials, the decorative aluminum panels, and then the slump concrete masonry units that will match the existing structures on-site. Here's a quick finished rendering of what the approvals along the front would look like. Staff has determined that the subject findings relative to the requested entitlements can be made, and recommends that the Planning Commission approve both CDP 25-007 and SDP 25-0022, subject to the findings and conditions in the draft resolution. I'm here to answer any questions that the Commission have. I will state also that the HOA representatives are here, including the President, Bruce Gordon, who I've been working with for the last couple of years on this project, and he's here to answer any questions. And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Questions for staff? Anybody? No questions for staff? Okay. So go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have none.
Okay, great. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the Commission for discussion and a vote.
I think it's a fairly straightforward project overall, you know, with the drainage, landscaping, and the other items enumerated by staff, so I can make the findings.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Dingra. I fully agree with your statement. The improvements on the trash enclosures is nice. The bigger issue here for me appears to be something that we've discussed kind of elsewhere in our reaching out to property owners at certain locations on bluffs to kind of divert some of the water away from the bluffs, and the improvements in that respect I find good, not just for the property owners here, but, you know, people down using the harbor below where there have been bluff failures near that specific area in the past. So those kinds of improvements are good to see from the property owner and for staff pushing it through. So I'm also supportive and can make the findings.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Ms. Hopel?
I don't have anything to add beyond what my fellow Commissioners have said, and I am supportive of the project.
Great, thank you.
Agreed. I think it's a really beautiful upgrade. I think it's something that will be a benefit to the community, and I think the drainage is something that I'm very much in support of, so I can make my findings.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna concur with everything everybody said. I think the idea of fixing the bluff drainage is really important. Vice Chair Bowen mentioned that. I think more it's critical on that bluff top edge. It's certainly a nice upgrade. It conforms to our local coastal plan, to our zoning code, and I don't see any reason not to approve it, so I'm fully supportive of it and appreciate the homeowners, you know, making some upgrades to that, that project. So with that, entertain a motion if anybody's open to it.
Sure.
I'll move to approve the coastal development permit, CDP 25-0007, and SDP, the site development permit, SDP 25-0022, to build fences taller than the three-and-a-half-foot limit within the front yard setback at 24242 Santa Clara Avenue.
Great, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, first and a second, all in favor? Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Wait, are you in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, so all in favor, nobody opposed. That item carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Moves us on to the next item, which is item number four, which is an appeal by the Center for National Lands Management of the Community Director's determination that a coastal development permit, CDP 24-0022, is not exempt from California Environmental Quality Act and requires preparation of a subsequent environmental impact report. Do we have a staff report on this?
Your staff report tonight will be brought to you by Principal Planner Chris Johnson. On your legal team tonight consist of Terrence Gallagher and, of course, General Ferrell. And if you have any questions on the technical document or the SEQA documents, Kristin Bog from Michael Baker International is also here if you have any questions.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. Good evening, Chair Nelson, members of the Commission. Tonight's presentation concerns an appeal filed by the Center for Natural Lands Management in connection with the Director's determination of coastal development permit, 240022. Specifically, the appeal challenges the determination that the project is not exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, also known as SEQA, and therefore requires the preparation of a subsequent environmental impact report. For some reason, the slides are not advancing, Martha. There we go, we're back. This slide provides an overview of the application's key processing milestones. Notable dates include when the application was deemed complete on February 24th, 2025, a determination on March 26th, 2025, that the project does not qualify for an exemption and requires a subsequent EIR. On June 3rd, 2025, city staff issued a detailed SEQA exemption memorandum. On June 3rd, 2025, city staff issued a detailed SEQA exemption memorandum to CNLM. And on June 18th, 2025, CNLM formally appealed the director's determination. For some background, the Headlands Conservation Park is shown here on this figure outlined in green with the nature trail shown in red. The trail has been operating since 2009 with the hours of 7:00 AM to sunset seven days a week throughout the year. An application for a coastal development permit was submitted by the Center of Natural Lands Management to restrict trail access hours to four days a week with modified hours for summers with closures to the public for special events two days a month. A CDP is required to formally establish daily hours of operation for the nature trail as required by the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan, also referred to as the HDCP. CNLM's, CNLM's proposal to restrict the use of public access of the trail system to four days a week with restricted summer hours and special events would reduce the time, reduce the use of the trail to 14 days each month instead of approximately 30 to 31, and reduce daily open hours of, to public access from 11 to 14, 11 to 14 to eight to 10 hours. And it would reduce the public's use of the trail by over 3,000 hours annually and represent more than a 50% reduction on public trail hours. For some reason, that's not going. On June 3rd, 2025, the city prepared a detailed memorandum analyzing both categorical and statutory exemptions under SEQA and provided CNLM with substantive justification for why the proposed project does not qualify for either. As noted in the summary table in the staff report, the project does not qualify for a SEQA exemption as the proposed trail hours, trail hour modifications do not meet the criteria required for a SEQA exemption. On June, on June 3rd, the city prepared a detailed memorandum analyzing both categorical and statutory exemptions under SEQA and provided CNLM with substantive justification for why the proposed project does not qualify for either. As noted in the summary table, as well as the staff report, the project does not qualify for a SEQA exemption as the proposed trail hour modifications do not meet the criteria required for a SEQA exemption. Seems to be a delay. So what we'll do now is we'll go ahead and start in with the CNLM appeals. There are several claims that were made by CNLM in their letter to staff. First claim here is that the abuse of discretion in denying a CDP exemption. The city's exemptions analysis was done by an environmental expert, independently reviewed by planning staff, and based on CNLM's own application. Staff also worked with CNLM and CDFW during the process, so the claim of bias is unfounded. Concerning claim two, failure to work with the property, I'm sorry, failure to work properly with CDFW on a SERP certification. The staff, city, the city met with CNLM and CDFW, which is the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, to discuss the SERP acclibability. Both agreed that the city as a lead agency decides eligibility. Since the city found that the SERP exemption, exemption didn't apply, it didn't need to consult with CDFW. The process followed the legal requirements. Claim three was that the SERP exemption applies to the project. Staff noted three key points to that response, and the project involves activities beyond habitat restoration that include public events and access changes, which means it's not solely for conservation purposes. Therefore, the exclusivity requirement is not satisfied. Secondly, CNLM's proposed changes mainly reduce public access. It do not create new climate resilience or biodiversity benefits as existing management already covers these goals. Therefore, the project offers no additional benefits. And lastly, the project lacks specific plans for ongoing environmental management. The existing plans are not connected to the proposed changes. Claim number four is that the Class 1 categorical exemption applies. Staff reviewed this and found that Class 1 exemption only applies of projects, to projects with minimal increases in use. Since CNLM's proposal reduces the trail access from seven to four days a week and includes discretionary closures, it significantly changes public use. Therefore, the exemption does not apply. Claim number five, this exemption requires, this is, this is in regards to the common sense exemption under SEQA. Staff's response to this was that the exemption requires certainty that there is no possibility of a significant environmental impact resulting from the proposed project. And the city's initial study that was prepared identified several SEQA topical areas that include aesthetics, recreation, transportation, and other areas. Since these impacts are reasonably foreseeable, the exemption does not apply. Claim six was the unusual circumstances applied to the project, the city applied to the project are misapplied, rather, by staff's finding. Staff's response to that is that a categorical exemption applied, if, even if a categorical exemption applied, and it does not, the project's location environment as it's, as a unique coastal trail and special geological features creates an unusual circumstance. These could result in significant impacts justifying an exemption under SEQA. And last claim, claim number seven, that a, a subsequent EIR requirement is improper. Again, the reduction in public access hours is a substantial change with potential environmental impacts. The initial study found that these changes could significantly impact aesthetics, land use, recreation, and transportation, requiring a subsequent EIR under SEQA 1.562. That concludes staff's presentation, and the staff's recommendation is that the planning commission deny the appeal filed by CN, by CNLM, and uphold the community development director's determination that coastal development permit, CDP 240022, is not exempt from SEQA and requires preparation of a subsequent environmental impact report. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions for staff? Start on this end, anybody? No? All right, no questions. We have one speaker card? Is this the only one that we have? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and call up Sarah Mueller. Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Nelson. I had requested up to 15 minutes to speak.
Yeah, so we're going to go ahead and we'll give you 10, and then time for rebuttal if there's any opposition speakers.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Nice to see you again. You're going to get to know me pretty well, it seems like. My name is Sarah Mueller. I'm with the Center for Natural Lands Management. As you know, CNLM submitted its CDP application on October 1st, 2024. That was 314 days ago. When the city submitted a CDP application for hours on the same trail, it only took the planning commission 21 days to approve the application. The city's attempt to impose onerous and expensive SEQA documentation requirements on CNLM is just one more effort by the city to delay consideration of CNLM's application on its merits. The city already took 146 days to determine that CNLM's application was complete instead of the 30 days required by state law. The city has now been working on its SEQA determination since March, issuing a memo determining that no exemptions were warranted, and then issuing another revised memo months later, as well as performing an initial study that concluded that the environmental impacts of CNLM's proposed project are so significant that an EIR at a cost of over $170,000 is required, despite the fact that CNLM's project involves no construction, no development, and no physical changes, and will benefit the environment. So now it has been 314 days since we submitted our application. And if the city's determination that an EIR is required is upheld, it will be well over another year before the city schedules a hearing on the merits of our application. We don't believe the city's SEQA determinations will be upheld. We believe that a court will strike them down. The result will be delay, which seems to be what the city wants, but at enormous cost to the city's taxpayers. And while the city continues to delay, ours stay in place that CNLM and multiple federal and state agencies have all determined are not protective of the sensitive species that are required to be protected. The Coastal Commission informed the city over a year and a half ago that the hours currently in place are not consistent with the city's own LCP. And while the city continues to delay, the population of Pacific pocket mice in Dana Point continues to decline, despite all other efforts to protect and support the population. A substantial body of evidence demonstrates a clear link between environmental stressors and impacts to reproduction. And CNLM's application materials discuss in many ways that people on the trail impact Pacific pocket mice both on and off the trail, likely leading to higher overall stress, lower reproductive success, and thus population resilience. This delay stands in stark contrast to the speed at which the city approved its own CDP to set hours on the Dana Point Preserve Trail, determining in 21 days that an expansion of the existing hours was not only exempt from SEQA, but also consistent with the city's LCP in the Coastal Act. The city quickly decided that its own CDP application was exempt from SEQA under the Class 1 exemption because the city determined that its proposal resulted in negligible or no expansion of use. The city staff report incorrectly states that the city CDP simply memorialized existing hours. That is not true. The city CDP increased the trail hours beyond any hours that had ever been in place. That is an expansion of use. The city staff report correctly states that CNLM's proposal reduces trail availability. This is not an expansion of use. As the city makes very clear, it is a reduction of use. The city staff report correctly states that the Class 1 exemption only applies to projects that involve negligible or no expansion of use. But then it says that the reduction in use in CNLM's project is substantial, and so doesn't qualify for the exemption. The Class 1 exemption is not concerned with how substantial a reduction in uses. It is only concerned with whether there is an expansion of use. A reduction in use is not an expansion of use. The city also determined in 2016 that its action to set hours on city trails in the Headlands was exempt under the Class 1 exemption, even though like CNLM's proposal, it adopted limited use of those trails. Why is CNLM's application treated so differently? The city also says that even if the Class 1 or another categorical exemption applies, the unusual circumstances exception would bar the use of such an exemption. But the unusual circumstance identified by the city is the location of the trail. This same unusual circumstance applied to the city's CDP to set hours on that same trail. But in that instance, the city didn't discuss any unusual circumstance and found that the exemption applied. Again, why is CNLM's project treated so differently? There's simply no justification for the determination that no SEQA exemptions apply to CNLM's project. The city staff report says each application has to be evaluated on its own merits under SEQA. We agree. Then why isn't the city evaluating CNLM's project on its own merits? The city has consistently refused to analyze the project CNLM is actually proposing and has deliberately ignored much of the material submitted by CNLM with its application in support of the project. Instead, the city has gone outside of CNLM's proposed project, relying on emails that it has cherry picked from the vast amount of documents that are part of the city's lawsuit against CNLM, taking them entirely out of context and concocted ulterior motives that it believes, believes CNLM has for this project. The city is abusing SEQA by determining that a project that is explicitly intended to benefit the environment and has no physical construction or development will somehow have a significant effect on the environment. None of the areas of supposed impact are even part of the definition of environment under SEQA, and the supposed impacts are completely speculative and certainly not significant. Public access is a social impact, not an environmental impact. As the project proposes no physical development, social impacts cannot be considered impacts under SEQA. In the context of the existing EIR for the Headlands project, it is ludicrous to say that CNLM CDP proposes a substantial change to the project that would require major revisions to that EIR. The project analyzed under that EIR, EIR included the entire Headlands development, consisting of 125 single-family residences, 65-room-in, 40,000-square-foot commercial site, as well as the conservation open space of the Dana Point Preserve and another 30 acres of city parks and trails. That project did not include specific trail hours for any of the trails in the Headlands. Instead, it specified that part of the design concept for the project and for the Dana Point Preserve was to determine an appropriate level of public access. That project and EIR contemplated that public access might be limited. That was part of the project already approved by the city and already analyzed under the existing EIR. CNLM CDP application proposes what CNLM as the owner and manager believes is an appropriate level of public access, as required by the HDCP. To say that this proposal is somehow a substantial change is nonsensical. We understand that the current hours have been in place for some time now, and that city residents and visitors value access to the trail. And we understand the city's desire to carefully consider and analyze the possible impacts of different hours of access to this area. A decision that CNLM's project is exempt from SEQA does not deprive the city of the opportunity to fully consider the implications of CNLM's proposal. As you know, you will have to make certain findings when you make a decision on the merits of CNLM's CDP, including analyzing consistency with the LCP in the Coastal Act. That is the appropriate form to consider concerns over the proposed hours. SEQA is meant only to analyze environmental impacts, which don't exist here. CNLM looks forward to a full consideration and discussion of the implications of the proposed hours when the planning commission holds a hearing on the merits. For now, we urge you to overturn the community development director's SEQA determinations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any more speaker cards come in?
We have no.
Okay, great. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and vote. Anybody want to begin? Let's go around.
You'd the staff report and all the exhibits that were attached to it. And I, I differ in the respect, I feel, an environmental impact report is required as, as stipulate or as, as written in the staff report that SEIR is required. And I, I'd like to just point out, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my phone because I don't have a hard copy. This is a email that came to us earlier today. But I'll just read in the concluding paragraph, Mr. Divley writes that, is talking about the easement on the nature trail, and it's saying, quote unquote, "It allows access for passive recreation along the nature trail and overlook area. Such public access shall be controlled and prohibits," the word prohibits, "controlled public access and public access during non-daylight hours." So if it was, it was to limit the daylight hours, it would have been so, it would have stated so. So from that vantage point, I, I feel that, that the appeal, you know, as, as proposed by the staff should be denied.
Yes, I am similarly, like Commissioner Dinger, supportive of the staff recommendation. Like when we heard this item during a previous consideration, you know, not this specific item, but relating to the approval in the past of the existing permit and perhaps some of the appeals in the past from CNLM about hearing this, you know, there was a lot of community support at that, talking about community use of this. Limiting the hours as has been requested by CNLM, I do think is a substantial issue, should be studied. And, you know, there had never been, I think, at that time, and, you know, I cited in some of the emails from staff that were cherry picked, but that's what you do, you sift through for the relevant information. You know, there hadn't been a lot of studies of, you know, the impact that the hours would actually have on, you know, the Pacific pocket mouse that we're actually talking about here, as opposed to, you know, just staff here, as opposed to, you know, just staffing concerns from CNLM and things like that. So, yeah, I'm supportive, kind of reiterating from some comments previously that we've had on items like this.
So I think one of the key factors here is, it's not just SEQA, but it's SEQA in an area that's part of the coastal area. So I think that's more crucial here, even though your comment is SEQA is only environmental concerns and not access, which is hours of social impact. I really disagree with this, because part of the Coastal Act is to maximize the public's use of these areas. So in and of that self, without reevaluating the EIR and all of the environmentally sensitive habitat areas, there's nothing that's showing what's causing it, what should be changed. And I think by doing the supplemental EIR, all of that can be evaluated to come up with whether or not there is impact by the hours, whether or not there's been truly a change in the population, because what's being presented doesn't really have any math to it, per se. There's no substantiation. The references to the decline in population was from a CLM staff member letter, memo, something. So there's nothing that I've seen that really shows me that there's been any reason for any changes in the mitigation measures that were lined out in the original EIR. All it is, is a change in the hours, which, again, is tied to the Coastal Act, and by changing that, it does change the requirements of the EIR. So I'm supportive of staff's recommendation.
I have a couple of questions. In the staff response 3C, it says, "CNLM responds by pointing to a host of procedures in the incomplete and unadopted 2023 Habitat Management Plan that it must follow." Are they following that? Are we, is there anything like that? Because from our last discussion on this, my takeaway was the maintenance of the trail, the maintenance of the habitat is the thing that is, you know, most impacting the, you know, the pocket mouse.
The Habitat Management Plan, as I understand it, is an ongoing document. It's not been fully approved. It's undergoing iterations and not, you know, it's not finalized and approved, so.
Okay. Because I agree with everything my fellow commissioners have said. As a local resident, I would say the thing I hear most from other local residents is walking the trails and seeing that they're not being maintained, there's, you know, things that are falling off the sides and things like that. And I feel that in regards to EIR, if we are shutting off more access, is that maintenance gonna get better when we're not having people on the trails at all times, when it's not fully staffed? That would be my issue with it, so I agree with staff report.
Great, thank you. I concur with all of your comments. I think, you know, a couple of things jumped to mind, and I, you know, there were a few questions that were, I think, presented to us, is sort of why is CLM being treated differently? You know, it's hard to say, I, you know, I can't tell you why you feel that way, but I can tell you that this trail isn't just a trail, it's a mitigation, it's an obligation that came with the city agreeing to allow for a private development to come into the Headlands and make some significant changes. We removed a road, as well as a well-used public trail. In return for that, we got a public trail that was supposed to be open every day, and that was all studied in an EIR. It was a mitigation measure for the project, and I think the idea that we can just erase mitigation measures because we don't think that they apply, I would imagine that for the people that live in the strand, that have a vernacular that doesn't work, they'd love to just not have the vernacular anymore, because it doesn't work. But we would never allow that, because coastal access is a component, and it's a key part of, you know, what we do when we're up here administering coastal development permits. A couple of other things jump out at me is that, you know, changing the hours on a gate may not have an environmental impact, but the results of closing those gates will. We have to consider that we have multiple hotels that their clients use our trails to access the beach. We have, it's the coastal trail, so it's people walking the coast, use that trail. If they can't get through the Headlands to get to the harbor, or get from the harbor to the strand, then we have to consider the transportation impacts of that. We're talking about 50% decrease in use of that trail, which could put a lot of stress on our transportation system. It may require a whole host of things, and, you know, I think this idea that not studying it as the approach would make it very difficult as a planning commission to make any type of informed decision on whether we would approve the modification to the hours. And so I think you'd be short-sighted yourself not to have those studies done. I think things that I would want to look at is, you know, what are the other alternative measures of protecting the pocket mouse and not restricting public access? Those are things that have to be studied. They get studied through SEQA. I've, you know, reviewed all the staff reports, I've reviewed both the CLM's letter, all of the letters from CDFW, and I think the thing that jumps out the most that the people that support closing the trail leave out is that the trail itself is a functioning trail that provides pedestrian access to the coast. And that access was, again, contingent and required as mitigation to the Headlands development. And so, for all those reasons, I'm in support of upholding the director's decision and denying the appeal. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure. I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution denying the appeal filed by the Center for Natural Lands Management and uphold the community development director's determination that CDP 24-0022 is not exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and requires preparation of a subsequent environmental impact report.
So your motion is to deny the appeal?
Correct, yeah.
Ms. first?
I'll second.
We're upholding the denial of the appeal. Thank you. That moves us on to our next item of business. If I can find my place here. Old business, we don't have any, we have no new business. Any staff reports tonight? No? All right. Which brings us to commissioner comments, we'll just go around the ring here.
No comments.
None here as well.
All right. One comment, I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the concerts in the park, and I wish Parks and Rec staff were here, they did just a bang-up job, an amazing lineup, a great time, and I can't wait for the next one. So thank you to staff for that. All right, with that, we'll bring the meeting to adjournment to the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on August 25th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 p.m. or soon thereafter in the City Council Chambers, located at 33282 Golden Lantern Suite 210.